I will call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order on Monday, November 22nd, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. Can we get a roll call, please? First item is approval of the agenda.
Vote to approve.
Starting. Dane and Jason, any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. Takes us to the consent agenda. For separate consideration.
Vote to approve.
Second. Jason and Dane, any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. Takes us into the public forum, which is time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Is there anyone here to speak in the public forum? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum. Moving to old business A, approved pay request number 17 for central business district infrastructure project from Construct Incorporated in the amount of $446,109.90.
Vote to approve.
Second. Sandy and Barb. Any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. Approved. Takes us into item B, approved change order number one for the wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase two project from Williams Brothers, incorporating the amount of $10,013.27.
Vote to approve.
Second. Dane and Brian, any discussion? Okay, council, please vote. And that is approved. Takes us into new business. There's new business A, resolution number 26, 2021, 2022, resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment finance obligations which shall come due in the next existing fiscal year, which include Almeco $30,000, NGNC membership $65,000, Van Howling $44,000, R. Flieger Consens LMI $143,603, Midstates Material Handling $21,808, Verbio $94,302, Ross Development LLC LMI $29,246, M. R. Properties Iowa LLC $5,289. Please repeat that. No.
Vote to approve.
Second. Barb and Luke.
It's good for Almeco.
Um, I believe. I know, man.
I think it's the last year.
Well, it's the last year. Almeco, I think, has two years.
Twenty-three.
Is the... In the resolution, it has Verbio at 94,306. Versus what's written on the agenda. Do we know which number is right?
Resolution itself is correct. Correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, council, please vote. Takes us to new business B, resolution number 27, 2021, 2022, resolution approving tax increment financing, indebtedness certification, direct interest certification refilement later than December 1st, 2021.
Vote to approve.
Second. Sandy and Jason, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. And that's approved. Takes us into C, resolution number 28, 2021, 2022, resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Evy and Seth Peterson, including annual appropriation tax increment payments.
Vote to approve.
Second. Jason and Dane. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. That's approved. Moves us into D, resolution number 21, 2021, 2022, a resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with JLA LLC and Kathy Kocler, including annual appropriation tax increment payments.
Vote to approve.
Second. Dane and Brian. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. And that is approved. Takes us to E, resolution number 30, 2021, 2022, resolution authorizing economic development grant to Harmony Clothing Closet.
Vote to approve.
Barb. Luke and Jason. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. And that's approved. Takes us to F, resolution number 31, 2021, 2022, a resolution setting time and place of public hearing to consider amendments to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Nevada, Iowa. Second. Barb and Brian, any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That's approved. And I have James' resolution number 32, 2021, 2022, resolution approving economic development grant agreement with Kenmont Theater Foundation.
Vote to approve.
Second. Dane and Jason. Any discussion? Moving on, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us into report, starting with city administrator.
Well, good evening. Nice to see everybody. So, some of the meetings that I went through, I did talk with Ann about more ordinances pertaining to changing barricade verbiage. That way, it makes it easier to, basically, helps with the safety of block parties for blocking things off. There's no repercussions if people don't have any barricades there. So, we want to make sure that people continue to have the barricades up during the parties. We talked about vacated housing permits, penalties for impeding traffic because nowadays, you're able to impede traffic. We do not have any penalty right now to enforce it. So, that was another thing that we talked about. Also, setting up a design criteria for cargo storage units that are in the community. We had another Pizza Fest made. We're hoping to have another one of those this week, but with Thanksgiving, it kind of threw things off schedule a little bit. So, we plan to pick that up next week again. We had a fieldhouse celebration, which is really exciting. We're finally getting that kicked off. So, that's great. Also, had our 2040 visioning, and we will be hopefully getting some information on that pretty soon here. Our executive, BC, we have another community publication. I have an ICAP webinar for privacy rights. And then, we also had a Drang District meeting with our open ditch grant five watershed area. So, it's been fun last couple of weeks, but been busy. And other than that, if you have any questions for you, I can answer.
Okay, moving on from my report. Yeah, I'll echo the fieldhouse event. Well attended. I think it was a good celebration and looking forward to finishing up that process. So, there's a little bit more left in the capital campaign for some local pledges. And then, we hope to hear back from the state cat grant next week. So, we think they're going to start making some determinations on this December 2nd. So, that's the timeline then. Of course, you guys will hear once we know something. Our vision 2040 process is going really well, so we hope to have document in front of all of you to review once we get that back from you and I. I think we're about to the point that it's time that you all will get to review kind of where that is. The Harmony Clothing Closet did a nice check presentations with some of their grants that they've received. And they have, they're getting a lot closer to their goal to do some of the, at least core projects they need to do to their building. So, appreciate council's support on that item tonight. There was a preview industrial center focus that they pulled together with Mike Hutton and Jordan and myself. So, they were kind of looking for feedback from all of the core ring about kind of what we could see happening out there for their vision on the A side of the line with development. So, just shows some of the continued partnership we've had with our counterpart, S. Ames. And then, lastly, Community Coffee, the second Saturday for December would be the 11th. So, I don't know if any of you have your calendars available and would want to put your names down for that one, but we're only some folks available for Community Coffee on December 11th.
Just a comment on that, because Barb and I did the last Saturday with Jordan. And it seems like we, it really was more effective when we had the Zoom, because we had the speakers and there was a theme. I mean, this is lovely. It's social, but I didn't feel, you know, necessarily the same sense of accomplishment that I did with the Zoom meeting. So, just a consideration like.
Yeah.
Whatever, but plus, I think we're taking up a space there right now where they don't have a lot of customer space. So, I don't know. Something to consider, maybe changing up a little bit.
And we talked about December 11th specifically because it is, you know, the downtown day, whether we should be taking up that space that day and encouraging people instead to be out and about.
Yeah, we can certainly chat with models and see what that may have been posted in already. And if it's been posted, we can have it. If not, we can always pivot to. And then, for 22, we can potentially do some live and some zooms.
You go.
And good feedback.
Couple of us could probably even schedule with those particular folks that are always, you know, they're always there and always have something for us. So, that we could, you know, not lose contact, but find a time during the day.
Yep.
To do that and not to that side of the space.
Anything else? And council reports.
I was just going to pipe up really fast. I sent emails to Jordan, you and Brett. Luke and I have been corresponding with Tracy Ingstrom, and she's a very reliable feeler for the community. And I sent an email asking about the possibility of a December 3rd meeting time. I sent that earlier today. So, if you've answered, I have not had an opportunity to look at my emails since ODR-100. But I think it's, she's got a passion for community and maybe reviving some intentionality around male health first aid as we head into winter and the extended COVID impact. She spends quite a bit of time at school, and I know I'm hearing from faith community that their, the youth in the community could use as much support as they can get right now.
Thanks, Barb. Other reports? And then, we'll go back to staff.
Um. The public, we had, we cleaned all the public works guys on the GIS. So, they're all working on, Florida guys are working on, on the GIS maps, curb boxes, water lines, water shut offs. The streets guys are working on the lines, intakes, color, fine inventories. The rest of what it has, or the pit goes around, they're hauling, hauling and spreading sledge. And Mark is getting prices on the alarm system for the lift station by the new addition. So, there's, we could be notified other than just a red blinking and a. Street passing and street sweeping, getting ready to put up Christmas decorations. Another problem was getting light bulbs for the decoration. And been working with the cargo on them, the blanket signs. So, that's the problem was with their batteries, where batteries going bad. And. Except for three hundred guys are updating, really, it's updating, finding curb boxes and water shut offs. So, you know, someone, we don't have a clue where they're at. So, they're updating them on the GIS map. So, we're staying pretty busy. Anybody got any questions? We guys have a Thanksgiving.
Evening, everyone. As you tell, the main street is about tied up or finished up. There's a couple other small things that we're working on and getting those finished up. Permits are still coming in like crazy, so people are still working on projects and stuff like that, which is nice to see. Unfortunately, I thought it was going to slow down, but that's not the case right now. A lot of work has been done tearing down those buildings for the demolition stuff at Academy Circle or Oakview Park. So, it's nice to see. That's about it. Really, there's just a bunch of small projects that are coming through. So, any questions?
Where did your mustache go?
That's fair. It looks crazy, but I'm always trying to impress my wife. So, this is about, I won't say. She's not impressed anymore about how I can't throw a football. So.
Right.
Always trying to step up my game. So, all right.
Have a good evening.
Just a couple of things from the fireside. The police department, we went through some training on Narcan. The benefit of that was we received about 24 doses of Narcan. It's about $42 a dose. So, this is a pretty substantial contribution from the state. It also benefited the fire department because there's IV injectable Narcan that we were able to get to. The best news for us is that the expiration dates aren't one year. So, this stuff is going to be in our supply for till 2024 when it expires. So, we were certainly excited about that. There's also some benefits of getting continued doses should we need them. All of our officers have been issued Narcan. Some of the benefits, we've used our expired Narcan in our police lab around the drug identification section. So, if anybody gets exposed to any powder, so they'll have the expired Narcan that they can have access to right away in the lab. So, that's a good officer safety thing. I'm working with the Iowa Firefighters Association and some of our legislators to change the line of duty death requirement in Iowa. There is, there is a disqualifier that says an occupational illness is not a line of duty death. And my argument is that occupation, the very word occupation means at work. And so, we're, obviously, this impacts our department. A lot of folks have not realized this law was written, the state's death benefit law was written prior to COVID being the thing. And so, we're working to try and get that law updated so that it'll be more timely. Also, we're meeting with Bellino Fireworks tomorrow. We, Nevada got a goal to work with the University of Iowa and Iowa Methodist Trauma Center to study fireworks injuries in our state to better be able to provide prevention messages and fireworks prevention. The fireworks industry, in our initial discussions, we're talking about developing a statewide trauma registry. So, when someone's injured by fireworks, we can capture that data and find out what behaviors are involved by the people so that we can put appropriate, accurate prevention messages out to counteract that. It's certainly a great. It's a great privilege to be able to sit down with the industry themselves, the stakeholders, and come up with a solution to avoid injuries in Iowa because of fireworks. So, really excited about that meeting tomorrow with U of I and Bellino. And then, we've been successful in the last two AFG grants, the Assistance to Firefighter Grant. This year, we are going to apply for $54,000 worth of bunker gear to maintain our current bunker gear and FPA standards. So, that's what we got going on. Thank you.
Ingstrom.
Thanks. I tried to talk loud. We had hockey this weekend and there was a lot of yelling. So. We have Callan still in FTO. He's got about three weeks left until he's on his own, till he starts shadow. Hopefully, after next week. So, that'd be his last phase of training. Then, he'll hopefully be on his own. We have two that would be graduating next month in the academy, Madison and Nick. And then, they'll immediately start FTO. And we have two officers, Sergeant Brandis and Officer Seymour will be going to FTO school in December. So, it won't just be me and Sergeant Henderson. So, yeah, as far as training wise, that's kind of where we're at with staff. I know we're going to be opening up testing in January for the spring academy. So, hopefully, we can find one body. See. And then, on a separate note, I think we're prepared and ready to start doing more community engagement stuff as far as, you know, with COVID, still taking precautions, that type of thing. And so, I've, it's probably been a year in progress. I've talked to city administrator Cook about this, that I'd like to get something in the winter time for people to do in Nevada. So, I thought an ice rink. I do an ice rink in my backyard every year. And skating and hockey is a big part of my family. It's, hockey's a different story with skating. It's cheap, simple, fun, and I think everybody can do it. So, approached him with the idea of doing a skating rink in the green space. And so, with some donations, we were able to purchase a rink with no city funding. It was all donated. And now, we're looking at acquiring some skates to be owned by the city. And we got a quote actually yesterday. And myself and the donor, we're going to be going around, talking to some businesses around town, see if there's some donations that they can do. And then, kind of, you know, front load that with, you know, they can have a company outing, you know, whatever the case may be. They can sponsor that event. We're looking at three events for the year, just to kind of work into it. You know, see what the reception is like, do three events, and then do like an adult date night in February or something to kind of wrap up the event season. It'll be open pending on weather, ice thickness, that type of thing. I'll do the maintenance on it, clear the snow, make sure it's accessible, make sure the ice is thick enough so that way, people can skate on it safely. I'm going to get with Aaron on a waiver that we can put on our website. People can fill it out, email it, or drop it off in the water box. But yeah, I think it'll be fun. Talked to Jordan about when I clear the snow or resurface the ice, getting into a costume or something, making it fun. You know, I think we got a Grinch costume somewhere. I'll be more than willing to do that. But something I've been wanting to do, I do it with my family. I think it's a good community engagement tool. And also, too, it'd be fun for folks, especially first time skaters, that type of thing. Or people who have skated, they just don't have anywhere to go, or maybe Ames too far or pending weather, that type of thing. They can do it here in our community. So. And then, I'm going to be getting with the fire department, doing our bike radio again. We've been two years absent because of COVID issues. So, I think we're prepared to do the bike radio again. We, fire department got a grant for some bike helmets. So, we're going to be purchasing those this spring. Plan on doing it in May, because May is Bike Month. Just makes sense. And I'm also going to get with Ronnie over at the Story County Medical Center and see if we can't start doing Kids Safety Day again. So, we did it one year, and then Ms. Rona visited us. So. So, yeah, so that was a huge success, a lot of moving parts with that. But I think it really worked out really well, and then we were hit with the bug. So.
But other than that, everything's peachy. Any questions?
How big will it be?
Twenty-five by seventy.
What is it going to be for you?
Face up here.
Up here. Oh, that's a main street project. Cool.
It's kind of neat, too, because when leadership Nevada was visioning out there, some of the designs actually had that as a use. So, it's pretty neat to see it come around, and thank you for working on it.
Yep.
Your creative things. I like it.
Good thing you have waivers, because if I ever get out there, Aaron's going to want me to sign one, because.
It's the great athletic equalizer.
Skating is, I mean.
Out there, there's a little bit of a crown, so the shallow spot will be in the center of the ice, which is fine, because we want the edges thicker, because that's the first thing to melt is the edges, and they start to kind of lift away from the boards. But, and we plan on making some assists out of PVC for kids, adults, because the wall is just not going to be tall enough to kind of grasp, type thing. So, but yeah, so we'll make a few assists, that type of thing. And they're mainly the figure skates that we buy. Figure skates are a lot easier to skate in than hockey skates. Hockey skates, there's not as much blade or touching the ice to where figure skates there are. And they're just easier to maintain. I've had discussions about how often we sharpen on that type of thing. And it'll be a skate-by-skeet case-type deal. The first year, we shouldn't have an issue. Then, the second year, we'll kind of see where we're at. The question is still, do we ask for donations or skate rentals, $2, $1 for a skate, that type of thing, to kind of maybe generate a little bit of revenue so that we can purchase a sharpener? And then, you know, pay for some events, you know, that type of thing. We're not going to make it too extravagant. I think a dollar or $2 is pretty reasonable. And then, to make sure we get our skates back, it's, you know, skate for a shoe or skate for an ID, that type of thing. So, so it's just some minor things we got to work out, but I think it's going to be pretty fun.
My skates would need a skate rodeo first.
Yeah.
Some maintenance.
Oh, yeah. So, so is it going to be one of those situations that if someone has their own skates, they can just come up and skate whenever they want? Lights?
Vote for waiver.
That's why I asked you, how big do we need, do I need to start drumming up some lights for the night event? It's. Yeah, we do a planned night event. Again, a lot of this is weather-based, right? So, once we kind of get the look at the extended forecast, then we can kind of look at, you know, do we need to get lights? Who do we go to, that type of thing? So. So, yeah. So, I mean, like I said, there's some details. A lot of it will be during the daytime, but like the date night will be like February. So, if that's something that we can do, I imagine in February, we'll start looking at some companies that do lights or somebody in town willing to donate lights, that type of thing. Because I know, I don't know who we use for Lincoln Highway Days for the rodeo for extra lighting, because I saw some generators out there. Or I can talk with ISU Athletics. They have some lights that they use in the G lots for night games.
I think Midstates has lights.
Yeah, so.
Higher.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of people we can go and harass and, you know, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, the most important thing is that as of today, we are fully staffed again at the library. So, our New York Services librarian Dylan started today, and our two new. new adult full-time staffers started over the past month or so, and so we're excited to kind of have our full staff, and now we can kind of get to plan and imagine some of the things we want to do at the library. In terms of programming, we had our last COVID clinic on Veterans Day, and it was in time for kids to get vaccinated, so we had forty-five kids and forty-five adults all get vaccines that day, and we were gonna schedule another one, but Story County Public Health would like to work directly with the school to get the kids their second shots, because once they open the package, they have to use them all, and so if they can work directly with the schools, they can be more efficient in their use of the vaccines, so, and then we're in the process of starting to plan a lot of adult programs, this month we've got an Alzheimer's, dementia, and public health presentation from Iowa Department of Public Health, next month we are celebrating the hundred and seventy-fifth birthday of Iowa with a video on some of the indigenous groups in Iowa and the history there, and discussion and birthday cake, and we're planning on lots next year as well, and looking for partnerships on some of those, and then we'll bring back our youth programming once the holidays are done, and Dylan's been here for a while, and to make sure we're doing those safely, we're going to try to do as many hybrid events as we can, and offer Zoom programming, still using our owl cameras, but still cautiously optimistic we can get people back in the library, and potentially do limited sized events by having people register in advance. And then the other big thing is, the board and I are working on our accreditation, which is due in February, I've kind of done a dry run of that for one of my grad classes, and it doesn't look like we should have any issues, so we'll just get in all the details in the report and sending it off. Any questions?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I don't remember if I put this in my report or not, or if I had the information at the time, but we have an Eagle Scout, Ryan Wessels, who will be doing some recreational fishing improvements to the Wilson Pond, which is just west of the cemetery, and he's received a five thousand dollar grant for that project, so we're excited for that, and looking forward to working with him over this winter and spring on that project. Staff has also been doing some of the GIS training, mainly for the cemetery mapping program that we're working on, so that's been a part of our days that we've been doing here the last couple of weeks. The other big thing is tomorrow's our senior luncheon, so I know some of you are helping, we've got about two hundred seniors that we're going to feed, and then we've got about two hundred and fifty families in need that we're gonna feed in the afternoon, so about four hundred and fifty meals tomorrow, and we'll have a busy day, so, other than that, we're just thankful for the extended fall we've had, so we're still working outside on quite a bit of stuff, so, any questions I could answer?
Time, do you need us to be there to help out for?
Eleven, eleven fifteen, be great.
Very good, thanks. Henry, do you have anything you want to report on the ministry?
I can do a quick little, we, this past Saturday, there was a really nice article in the Delaware Register on the general building project, and that, we didn't know that was gonna be in the register, we originally thought that was just gonna be locally run, and so we were pretty happily surprised with that, and it's generated a lot of interest and a lot of good conversations, so we're pretty excited about that.
Thanks, Henry. Mike, do you have anything?
No.
There's been updates that were provided.
I don't have anything to say to him.
Okay, council, anything before we adjourn?
I'm moved to begin.
Okay, Dan and Jason, and anyone on the budget committee we're gonna meet afterwards, so all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
If you say nay. Okay, we adjourn, thanks everyone.
Let's see, it's a tricky game.
Yeah.
It's a weird game.
It's like a date.
Never.
I could do this.